Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It is Monday, August 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. And we have first a series of committee meetings this evening. And then we will have a session, a regular session of council. All members are present and we start with our City and Safety Services Committee chaired by Member McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. City and Safety Services has two items on its agenda for this evening. And that's first, the fire station headquarters, project number 346. And second, the West State Street restroom facility, project number 349. Council members have received draft legislation regarding the fire station headquarters. And that's ordinance 73-25. And this is helping us complete payments for the construction of our new fire station headquarters. And we have our City and Safety Services Director present to try and give us an update on that.
Thank you, Member McCary.
Yes.
So the, um, the reason that we asked to have this ordinance before you this evening, and I realize that you, this body passed it in June before going on recess in order for us to go ahead and, um, finish paying for the project, it's twofold. Number one, I made an error when I reviewed the ordinances that we pulled together to have you modify in June in that I didn't cross-reference O-9323. Um, and if those of you who were on council remember, which probably don't, back to O-9323 because I didn't, um, that was the ordinance where, um, we had been pulling from other places and instead we went and put that money back and took all of the bond money that we had gone out after because we went over two different bond issuances. That unfortunately I missed in the amended version and we ended up amending an earlier ordinance. And that's what ended up happening in, in June. And so it, it still showed a cross-reference to general fund money, you know, like $3 million in general fund money being expended, which was not the case because ultimately we ended up using bond money to do all of that. And so we amended the wrong ordinance ultimately. And it's my fault. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't check closely enough. And now I'm going to come to you and say that I didn't check this revised version closely enough because I just saw right before I came up here that we still have the old number in here, cross-referencing the, the, um, they're referencing from the, the general fund. So, um, and it's in section. It's on the second page. There's a reference to section. If you, if you could give me a moment to go through this, honestly, I'm not prepared to talk about the specific math here publicly because I just caught it. Look, it says section four, um, section three is ordinance, is, is, um, and it makes reference to section three here and it, and you see it says 14 million is crossed out and it says 13,540. I think those numbers are reversed. I think, um, I think it was supposed to be 13,572 was crossed out and the 14 million was the, was the new number, number one. And then number two, um, where it says $3,640,000, um, um, it, it's, it was, that was just supposed to be $640,000, not 3,640,000. And that extra 3 million was supposed to be out of the next paragraph where it talks about $9,932,000 for the service safety fund. That's really supposed to be the higher amount because we modified that back in O-9325, 2023. And, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't check this closely enough either. So, um, you know, if you, if you give me a minute, um, I can try to go through here and do the math as a meeting. I know I asked you to do it quickly and I'm sorry. I, I take full responsibility for not checking things closely enough.
We appreciate the update and if it's all right with President Crowell, I think we can go to West State Park restroom facility and then come back to headquarters.
Yes.
Terrific. For the discussion of the restroom facility, I would like to ask Ryan to pull up an image of the example. Great. All right. So the purpose of the ordinance that has come before committee this evening is to update the project funding for the new accessible restroom facility at West State Streets Park. It increases the appropriated amount by 325,000 to account for both the prefabricated building and the required site preparation. And some information about what the facility will include. It will be four single user restrooms with baby changing tables, uh, one adult-sized universal changing table, a drinking fountain and flood venting and simulated barnwood textured walls and cedar shake roof. I appreciate the Director of Arts Parks and Recreation for providing us with this information about the proposed construction project. Understand that site work would include plumbing, grading, pad installation, all necessary before the September manufacturing and October installation dates. Uh, and with that in mind, our Director of Arts Parks and Recreation has asked that we consider suspending the rules when we get to that point. So I'll open this for discussion and questions among committee members at this time. Yes, Councilmember Clapfelter.
Just one clarification question. You mentioned, I think you said flood, flood venting? Can you explain what that is?
I believe that's, uh, we know that this is a flood prone, flood prone area and that this is intended to help reduce the issues with it coming off of the roof. But is anyone able to provide?
Point of order for your committee. So let's hear from Members Reisner, Swank and Thomas first, who are on City and Safety Services, and then we'll open it up to the rest of council, even though I realize we're all here at the desk.
Thank you. Appreciate that. First from members of the committee. Yes, Member Thomas.
I think from looking at the other buildings like this, the flood ventings like low to the ground, vents that open up so that if the water comes in, it flows back out.
Okay. Appreciate that. If we get any clarifying information that contradicts that, we'll come back to it. Other members of the committee, Members Swank.
You know, Dodge, may I have several questions? Um, I think I heard you say so that it could be manufactured next month. So at this point in time, this prefab building is, is not manufactured for us specifically.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Have we sent any money to this company yet?
I don't believe so.
We have not.
No. Okay, thank you.
Well, the reason I asked those two questions is I have some real concerns about this facility. The total amount asked is $325,000. And if you divide that by the square footage of the building, which is 520, that's $625 per square foot. Now I have a house over on the far east side at 1,760 feet. At that rate of construction cost, it would cost me $1.1 million to replace that house. Where on the county auditor's site, that house is taxed at $298,000. $625,000 for a prefab building seems like an outrageous amount to me. Uh, and then I look at the drawings. There are four drawings in there. There's a sink, there's a changing table, and there is a toilet. But there's no urinal in any of these. That's a concern of mine because these, this restroom is going to be used how many months out of the year? Maybe six? I'm just wondering, and Member McCary was nice enough to send me a text today about a, um, a, uh, project similar in, um, Grand Rapids, Michigan, or not Grand Rapids, I'm sorry, in, um, Midland, Michigan. And Midland, Michigan recently approved a 2,200 square foot, four times the size of this, 2,200 square foot restroom facility with changing places unit for $312,000, which works out to $142 dollars per square foot. Why couldn't we just build this ourselves using local contractors, employing local people and keeping the money local? This seems like an exorbitant amount of money for a prefab building. Now I've visited their website. They roll these things out one after another after another. They put them on a big truck. Most, not most, a good portion of the cost of this is transporting that massive structure here. It takes a crane, one of those big ones, not one of those ones you see over at the tool place on East State Street, but one of those big ones to lift it off the flatbed trailer into the place on a foundation. We're not building a basement. We're not plumbing the inside of the building. It's pre-plumbed. We just hooked this up to the plumbing that we have coming from our sewer and water lines. I just have a, a real difficult time, uh, supporting this considering, one, we have not, it has not been manufactured, and two, we have not spent a dime, and three, it wouldn't hurt to do this next year because we've already been talking about this for three years.
Thank you, Members Swank. And to your point, uh, this, the goal of creating more inclusive restrooms across the city is one of our goals from the comprehensive plan. Other comments from committee members at this time or questions? Member Thomas?
I was just thinking back. I believe we switched to the manufacturer because the bids that went out were way higher and this was the more economical choice available here. And it includes the site prep and the plumbing, uh, that you'd have to run under the building and whatnot. That's just what I'm recalling from when this first came.
Members Swank, would you like to respond?
The bids I recall because when we first started talking about this, I was not even a city council member. I was the president of the, or not the president, the Chair of the Arts Parks and Recreation Board. And all along, we've been talking about some kind of prefabbed structure. All along we have. And the direct director could, for whatever reason, and I'm not going to put words in her mouth, but we never could find something. So we've been talking prefab all along as opposed to even though it's, well, brick and mortar. I was going to say sticks and nails, but brick and mortar in this, in this case. And that's all this is, is a brick and mortar thing. Um, if you look at their, if you go to the website and look at it, you can see what it is. And it is, it is Spartan. You go into a room in a 26 by 20 foot building and over in the corner is a toilet with appropriate ADA accessibility, plenty of room for wheelchair to turn around in there, changing stations, and a place to wash your hands. And again, no urinal. I just don't think we could do better and cheaper and local.
Appreciate those points. Our committee meeting structure allows for us to hear from administration, then the public before we come back to other council members. Uh, any comment from the administration tonight?
Um, I do have a couple of comments to Member Swank's point. Number one, um, I understand this cost per square foot is much more, uh, significant than a, than a standard house. Um, I also know that, um, you know, hundreds of people don't use the bathroom per day in a standard house. And so from a commercial grade facility and something that has to take the, the wear and tear of hundreds of people going into a bathroom on a given day, that's where some of those costs lie. Number two, this facility has to be able to flood and has to be able to be cleaned out and then reused. And so, um, again, a house is typically not built to be able to withstand a flood and then, and then not. And then my third point is we bid this three times. It came in twice the, uh, at least twice the estimate, um, the, the design engineer's estimate, the architect's estimate. Um, and so we couldn't award it to a local contractor. Uh, I think, I think two of those bids, we didn't get any bids, nobody bid, and, and that was for a stick-built building. Um, we talked to members of Sandlot, um, and we asked them if they wanted to, you know, if we wanted to buy the material and they wanted to build it themselves and, um, you know, there was some initial interest in that. Um, but then, you know, there wasn't any, um, you know, follow-on, um, response to that. And, and, you know, I'm certainly willing to consider that as a, as a course of action, but I don't have the staff to oversee the construction and, and, and build that. And so that's why you, you know, you bid it, right? And so we bid it three times and nobody, no local contractor was interested in doing it for remotely close to the cost that was the, the design cost. So, you know, we did the best we could to find one that was available. Uh, I recommend if you think it's too expensive, then don't vote for it. Um, but we're asking you to go ahead and appropriate this money and, and, um, and authorize it. Again, I think Catherine noted in, in an email to you that ultimately it was in, um, it was supposed to be in the budget and we had a purchase order in place from a couple of years ago and we were just going to have, uh, ask for an additional appropriation, but she accidentally closed, um, the purchase order at the end of last year as she was trying to clean things up. And, and so it, it didn't, um, it, it didn't stay open. So we're asking for a, a re-appropriation of the full amount plus that, um, that extra money that we need in order to get the site prepped. So thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you. Yes, I see that the total new authorized amount proposed is 325,000, uh, 250,000 for the building costs and 75,000 for the site preparation. Do we have any comments from the public at this time? Or, oh, sorry, did I miss that one? Yes.
I think we mentioned the word clean or cleaning. What will the cleaning schedule be for this? With the amount of traffic that's going to be going through it, are we going to be able to clean it daily during the season?
Thank you for your question, Member Swank. Um, I will get you an answer to the cleaning schedule for the restrooms at the park at, um, at the quickest that I possibly can. Typically what happens is during the season, seasonal, um, employees clean restrooms daily in the parks, um, but I, I can't say that definitively right now. So if you give me a little bit of time, I will send you an answer to that question.
Okay, the reason I pose that question, and I appreciate the fact you wanted to look into that and you've been very good in doing that, is my understanding we're going to have to suspend the rules this evening without that answer. Not a good practice.
Without a, without, if I may?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Without an answer to the cleaning schedule?
Yes, sir.
Of the restroom?
Mm-hmm.
So the cleaning schedule is what is now in the balance for this going forward? Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't believe so. Uh, Mr. Member Swank, are you implying that the cost of cleaning will be, is included in the?
No, 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 no. Are we going to be able to provide cleaning on a daily basis during the season?
It sounds like, um, we don't have a definitive answer to that right now, but we've heard that that would be the intention.
Because right now where this is going to be is on, let me get my directions here. The north side of the, the road near the Sandlot Fields.
Correct.
Yeah, not, not on the softball side, but on the, on the, the baseball side.
Correct.
And for those of you who've played baseball in the summer, in the springtime, or tried to play this July when we got 11.44 inches of rain in the city, there's a lot of dirt, a lot of mud, a lot of crap that goes into buildings where people go. And if we're not cleaning this on a daily basis, even though it's set up for industrial use and big traffic, it'd be a mess. I, I just, I just, here's my biggest beef. I feel we're rushing this through. I went back and looked at 2022, 2023, and 2024. And this meeting that we have, the first meeting after the break, in 2022, we had one committee meeting. Tonight we have a full committee with a bunch of requests to suspend the rules. 2023, we had one committee meeting. Tonight we have the entire thing here. Didn't have any in 2024. And I just kind of feel we're rushing through this. And we've had this project in the works for three years. I don't see the great need to rush it without all the questions answered.
I think, uh, Member Thomas, and then we might hear from the administration to the implications of potentially delaying the project. Member Thomas?
Uh, I guess I was looking back through the email. Excuse me. So this is already approved in '22 from what I was reading. So we're just adding 75,000 for the site prep and then re-appropriating due to the mistake of the, the purchase order being closed. Um, so I don't think it's like a whole new ballgame we're talking about here, pardon the unintentional pun. Um, I think it's a substantial improvement over the porta-potties that have been down there for decades. And I believe Member Stone, or Director Stone said that there is typically daily cleaning during the season and that he would just check on that. But, um, the only rush is really because of an incidental, you're an accidental, uh, closing of a purchase order. I think it's just fair to point out. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for the administration at this time? Then I will invite them to comment on any implications of potentially delaying approval of this project. Would Director Stone or the mayor care to comment on how this might negatively impact the city?
You know, we're just trying to meet a construction timeline, you know, ultimately. And, and, you know, the prefab contractor has asked, um, you know, to get started so that we can get it installed this year. And we, we do need to be able to pick up, um, and do some site prep beforehand and need money and place to do that. And like I said, like, uh, uh, Member Thomas mentioned, the, the PO was closed accidentally at the end of last year and we'd like to, like to go ahead and do that. Um, and again, I, I guess I would ask, um, if it, if it is that much of an issue, um, just vote against it and then that's fine. We'll, uh, we'll wait until next year.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the audience. Members of the pub, oh, did, oh, Mr. Mayor, please comment.
I can only imagine most of council is watching the news these days with the actions taking place at the national level with tariffs and the tariff war that's going on right now. So we can certainly kick the can down the road for another year. I guarantee you, the cost of having this built, whatever it is, is going to go up. And it's going to go up significantly if what we're hearing at the national level holds true with the impacts that we're seeing on our national, international partners. So we can get this done today at this price or we can sit there and again, mark my words, this time next year, whatever this is going to cost, it's going to cost easily 10, if not 20% more than it costs right now.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Mayor. Uh, any members of the audience, Auditor Hekt?
I would like council to go ahead and at least do a first reading on this tonight and help make things on their own. This is definitely needed as we've talked about it. You don't want to suspend it and he doesn't, he doesn't want to vote for that tonight. Get it started. In two weeks, you'll have your answer to the cleaning issue and then you can read this in it. I think just not talking about it all and putting it off till next year is not a good answer for our question.
Thank you, Auditor Hekt. Um, now moving on to members of the public, any comments? Any comments from non-members of the committee, members of council? Yes, Members Spielman?
There's only, it seems to me, and I, I've only been down there a couple of times in the restroom anyway, and it seems like there were more stalls and stuff than we're proposing. Is that true? I mean, we're only talking about four now, four toilets, and it seems there were that many in the women's restroom, I think. So I'm just wondering, is this enough?
I don't have an answer to that question. Director Stone, can you comment?
How'd you settle on four?
I'll, I'll speak to it. I mean, we, we really are trying to balance accessibility, uh, and, and quantity of, of latrine fixtures. Um, we could probably do, uh, more fixtures in smaller rooms, but you couldn't have adult changing tables and, and spaces that a wheelchair can turn around and get onto a site. And so as we, you know, tried to decide, um, uh, do you do gendered restrooms and have more stalls, um, or you do non-gendered restrooms, you know, uh, and, and have all of them be accessible restrooms so people can? And so ultimately, as we've tried to balance the demand from varying demographics and varying segments, we thought that four non-gendered restrooms that were all accessible would be the most appropriate way to, to, to build this facility.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, nothing is being torn down, so everything that's torn down will remain in the existing restrooms on the south side of the street. This is additional restrooms. I think, I haven't been in the women's restroom down there. Forgive me for not going in there. Um, the male restroom, I believe, has two toilets and two urinals.
Okay.
It is helpful point of information to clarify that these are in addition to the existing, uh, latrines. So any other members of council, uh, comment on this issue while it's still at committee? All right. Uh, not seeing any additional comment, we'll move back to our prior agenda topic, the fire station headquarters and ask Director Stone if he has any guidance on how he'd like for council to consider proceeding this evening.
I'm not done. I've been talking about toilets. I'm not done. I've been talking about toilets, like going through the math.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah. Would it be, yes, President Crowell?
Point of order for, um, Law Director Lyson. Can we return to a committee meeting after? Is that okay if we return?
We can continue on with?
Continue on and then come back to?
Go back to that.
Okay, great. I propose that we move on to Transportation Committee and then we can come back to City and Safety Services for this issue.
Thank you.
And hopefully Service Safety Director will be able to have time to, so.
Yes, for that we'll pause and switch to our next committee.
Okay, um, our next committee is Transportation chaired by Members Spielman.
Yes, thank you. So we are back talking about the, um, roundabout at 682 and 56. There has been some additional monies gotten from ODOT. And, uh, so there's some changes to this ordinance that, uh, they want to get passed tonight. So, uh, I'll go through the, the items here. Uh, whereas the city has been awarded not 2.39 million, but 3.65 million for ODOT and 400,000 for OPWC. And then, uh, no changes until we get down to section two, uh, instead of 2,900, I'm sorry, 2,390,000, it's 3,650,588 to Small Cities ODOT Fund 589 TC 500. Then, uh, we go down to section three and it says the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to, and rather than 4,620,000, it's 5,888,588. Then an additional, uh, an additional item is 750,000 authorized by Ordinance 2524 from Street Rehabilitation Fund 572 TC 500 for preliminary engineering services. And then, um, rather than 2,390,000, uh, it's 3,650,588. So, which is great that we got some extra money. Uh, the thing that's a little bit puzzling to me is that the winning bid for this project is 404,471,704 and 10 cents, which is 6,000, $6,204 over the engineer's estimate, which is great. That's pretty close. I think that's pretty impressive actually. But the requested amount is 1,400, if I'm doing the math correctly, uh, the requested amount of the ordinance is 1,408,883,090 more than the bid. So I get it that we need a contingency fund, but this So I get it that we need a contingency fund, but this seems high, and I think it's worth asking what that's about.
Sure. Thank you, Members Spelness, for that question. This, the authorized amount is inclusive of the design costs, as well as construction engineering costs and contingency money costs. So, so we're, we're going back in the authorized amount and capturing what was previously authorized for, for design and that, for the total project cost.
Okay. That's a helpful clarification. And I understand that this will be, the construction, assuming all goes well, will begin still late summer, which is our original goal, or early fall of 2025, and completed in summer of 2026. And the reason that you want to suspend the rules on this one is that we, and I'm quoting here, "We are approaching 60 days post-bid opening for contract signing."
Yes, ma'am. I heard loud and clear in, in June that I'm not to exceed my authority. And so my authority right now does not allow for me to sign the contract because the authorization doesn't, does not, is not for the amount necessary to, to sign the contract. And so I'm asking you to suspend so I can go ahead and, and sign the contract. We asked ODOT, and we told them, hey, we, you know, we got a good bid that's within the, but we can't, we don't have enough local money to do this. And so they were able to shake loose other money from other sources to be able to increase our amount and, which is wonderful. But, you know, when you bid, you put something on the street, and the, the bid has to be good for 60 days. And then, and if you don't contract within 60 days, the contractor can say, hey, look, you waited too long. It's actually, prices have gone up. And so that's why we're asking you to, to, to suspend.
Okay, that makes sense. So, but just for clarification, how much is the design cost? How much?
I'd have to go back to the specific ordinance. I want to say it was in the 640,000 range, but I'd have to go back to the, to the specific ordinance.
Okay. So then, the total amount, the winning bid here is really only talking about the actual construction, but the total amount that we're asking for, you're asking for, includes that design of 600 and something.
Yeah. The authorization absolutely includes what you previously authorized. And what I'm doing is I'm just pulling all the money forward so this ordinance has the full amount.
Okay.
Which is good practice. It's not good practice for us to seek authorization for a project designed on one ordinance and then just authorization for construction on another one. We really, and I think it helps Auditor Hect specifically in keeping track of a project cost if the, if the authorization includes everything related to a project.
Right. And that makes a lot of sense, which is that that was not explained here. So that's why I think it's worth asking.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the Transportation Committee?
Members of the public, have you asked everybody, all, all, all your groups?
For input, Members Spelness?
Well, I just did.
Okay. Seeing none, we will call Transportation Committee closed, and we will move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee chaired by Member Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's three items under Finance Personnel. First is to amend Ordinance 23-24 reallocating income tax revenues. The proposed ordinance that we're, hopefully we'll be discussing later, has some small changes to the income tax mix, which we do every year to decide where the funds from the, or income tax goes. There's no changes in the original ordinance until we get down to section one, where there's a paragraph describing the various funds and percentages. And then we get down to the list of where the monies go, from A down to F. Looking at item B has, the original is 14.5%, which has been struck and replaced with 15.5% to Street Fund 220. Item C, which originally has 8%, has been struck and is now reduced to 7% to the Recreation Fund 270. Items D, E, and F remain unchanged. So that is essentially what the ordinance reads. The reasoning behind that is, as I understand from our discussions, is that the recreational department is doing well this year. So as, as happened, what happened in the past was there was always sort of a monetary crisis, making ants meat, trying to be self-sufficient. Things have turned around quite a bit, so these extra monies are probably not needed. However, the Street Fund definitely does need an influx of, of capital, and this is a good source to help provide the need, fulfill it. So that's it in a nutshell from the committee. Member Klauffelder?
I, I can completely understand why the Street Fund needs more funding, but, and, and your explanation is pretty convincing about the Recreation Fund, though it is, seems a little unusual to penalize people for doing well. But, but I'm just wondering, if, if the Recreation Fund gets 7%, is there a probability that they won't be able to do as much?
Mr. Mayor?
I was gonna say, is that a question of mine? No, if you remember, when we were putting the budget together for, for 2025, so last fall, one of the things I asked of council was to authorize a change in the mix, which is something that we are able to do annually with council approval. Recognizing that there were challenges going into the, well, at the end of 2024 and going into 2025, and we're looking at revenue coming in, it was then that I decided to put 2% into rec, taking 2% away from streets, because we had been doing well with streets and so and so forth. Right now, the amazing job that Director Catherine N. Jordan has been doing in the Rec Department with bringing in revenue that has not been seen at the amount that she's been able to bring in because of the program that's going on. It's been a great year for her, and so at this point in time, for us to be able to, with council's approval, migrate a percent back into the Street Fund, especially during a time when you look at the number of street projects we have going on right now, and the number of street projects that are in the queue for 2026, you know, being proactive to make sure that there's enough money in streets moving forward. And this is something that doesn't come in, it's not a windfall. It's going to be, you know, a ship that will see that 1% from now until we're, we change that mix again if we feel we need to. But it's not punishing anybody. It's actually kind of the inverse. The director's been doing such a great job at Arts Parks and Recreation. It's not punishing, it's recognizing that there is revenue there, and there for us to be able to migrate that money into an area where there's greater need at this point in time, which is the Streets Department.
Thank you.
It's a good question, but that's why we're doing it. That's why we're asking council to do it.
Member Wood?
Just probably a question for the auditor. I know we try and keep a certain percentage floating on the General Fund at all given times. Do you have similar practice for the other funds? Is there sort of like built-in padding in all of the funds? Or?
No, some, some, which is why we, we want to put some of this money that we moved to Recreation back into the Street Fund. But no, we have so many different funds and different requirements. Some grant funds, we're required to use up everything in there, you know, things like that. So we do for bigger funds like water, sewer, and streets, because any kind of unexpected project that, that pops up is very expensive. And it's the same kind of thing in the General Fund. It's a large fund with a lot of departments, and we need to be able to come up with more money. The fact is, we're required to have that cash balance, cash reserve policy for the General Fund when we go out to get a bond. They require us to do it for that. And that's the only fund that's that flexible, because the majority of the revenue is general obligation tax dollars.
So, can I ask?
Go ahead. Oh, yes.
Would it be correct to say that, that this sort of 1% float is pretty rare, isolated item? Or are there other times that we have?
No. My first year in office, I think we changed the tax mix three times in December. It just depends, like, you know, we've reviewed, you know, during July, we've reviewed our revenue and expense reports to see where we are halfway through the year. But that's the problem. Sometimes we get to the end of the year, and we've either spent more money than we thought we would, or the revenue hasn't come in as much as we thought we would. And so it's not uncommon to change this mix. Sometimes we only do it once a year. Sometimes it'll be more like two or three. It just depends on the circumstances. Things were really tight back when I first started, and it's a little bit harder to keep everything balanced, but yeah.
Member McCary?
I'm wondering, is it possible that this increase in funds for the Streets budget would result in more street repairs this year from beyond those which we already approved to be scheduled? I know there's a backup list of streets we might get to, but this wouldn't help us with that. Is that correct?
Mayor?
So you're, you're referring to annual paving?
Yes.
So not repairs, but annual paving?
Oh, okay. Right, right.
So, no, I mean, council have seen, you've seen the primary list of street repaving. We did do well this time when it went out to bid, but then we have the secondary list. And what we can do is if there's money still available, where we can start going down the alternate list, but it's not a matter of unexpected expenses or anything along those lines. I mean, we, this is when, when Director Stone was the Director of Engineering and Public Works and, and the, the Director after him, and currently with Director Olmaja, it's, this is what we anticipate each year with the grading system of the streets that need to be repaved. Street repaving, by the way, is going on as we speak, when they're out and about milling and paving, or crack seal is also done. But this has nothing to do with an emergency repair or anything like that. This is, you know, something we budget for every year, using the number of sources that go into our street repaving. But streets is a big part of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, but we have to go to the administration, then the people in the audience, and then back to you. How's that sound? Administration, anything?
Just to share one thing, and I appreciate, Councilor Wood, your, your question about, you know, is this typical or atypical? What would be atypical is, is, you know, the lion's share of the general revenue goes into the General Fund. And then we parse it out to go to Streets and Rec and Transportation. We have, you know, percentages that go to all the rest of them. Not atypical within the smaller percentages to make tweaks back and forth, because you're basically fine-tuning day in, day out. It's, it's not as easy to predict performance with Arts Parks and Recreation Fund or programming. As much as, as the director does an amazing job, there can be something new that comes on the table, and all of a sudden, wow, this is making more revenue than we had anticipated. Well, good. It's, it's kind of, at this point, you know, try it and see what floats and what doesn't float. As opposed to, and I have never done this, and I would lean on the auditor maybe, because she's been doing this longer than I, and that is, I would contend, not necessarily good form when you're sitting there making a tweak to the General Fund, because that's what pays our salaries, that's what pays a lot of other things. So that, at least under my administration, would be rare to see that happen. But the other ones, as was indicated, it's not atypical to make transitions between one of the lesser percentage fund lines, because we're not talking about a whole lot of money, but we're talking about money that's needed in, you know, to move it around from one fund line to another. Yep.
Other administrative officials? elected officials? Audience?
I have a question.
I'm getting to you. Following procedure here, but I think, Member Swank beat you to it.
Yep.
You're next.
Thank you.
Okay. First question for the committee chair. Is this going to go through three readings?
No.
Okay. So question for the auditor. How much real money are we talking about here, transferring from one account to the other? The end of June report, which is the last report council has, Arts Parks and Recreation had 738,197, and Street Funds was at 245,542. We keep talking about 1%, but what, what is the amount that's going to be transferred?
It's not, not going to be transferred. Starting this month, moving forward, every month, when we get interest from the bank or all the revenue is in there, then that's how we apply it.
But what's the amount? The real, real dollars?
So for the next, I don't know, we didn't calculate that. For August through the end of the year, it'll be that, that 1% of the.
Well, kind of like the cleaning thing, it would be nice to know that figure if, if we're expected to vote on this tonight.
There you go. Andy has.
It's in, it's roughly between, between $10,000 and $15,000 a month. And, you know, it fluctuates, because, you know, if you look at income tax and what comes in on income tax, it kind of goes up and down. But I think a percentage, like when we look at, like, a percent of the mix, that's roughly $120,000 a year to $140,000 a year. So I think, I think that's what we're talking.
So if it's $10,000 to $15,000 a month, would that be August, or would we start that in September?
August.
August. So we're talking $50,000 to $75,000 being moved from Recreation to Streets. Is that really going to make much of a difference? $50,000? $75,000?
It's just more of a balance, because Recreation doesn't seem to need it, and Streets, we definitely need, things happen all the time. And there was an issue today that came up that where, you know, money needs to be spent. And I don't want to talk out of term, but somebody hit a street light that has to be repaired now, you know, things like that. So, and as you know, we have a lot of street projects going on, and balancing them is a little bit difficult. They're very involved, because we have so many streams of money, et cetera, et cetera. And they don't get done as soon as we would like, and so they carry on. And it's just a balance of adjusting for the Street Fund.
So does that end?
To have extra money. Honestly, I think we might go back, take the other 1% by the end of the year. If not the end of the year, then next year.
So is this, this is what we're considering this evening is just for fiscal year 2025?
Yes.
Okay. But you did bring something about the repairs. Director Stone, it appears that the Ward Four has gotten hit very, very hard this year with waterline breaks, some big ones, particularly one over on May Avenue. When we have to do those things, do the repairs for that get charged against this line or some other line?
So that comes out of the waterfall, some people's water bills. If there's a waterline break?
Yeah.
That's an enterprise fund that it's, you know, they're doing healthy. It's a healthy fund line right now, as is sewer.
Okay. And that would include the repair of the street and all of that?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Very, very good. And out of, out of the 270 Fund, Recreation Fund, are any salaries come, come out of that?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, if the Rec Fund is so flush, why then have we not filled the unfilled groundskeeping position?
Well, I don't know that I'd say they're so flush, but they're doing better, because we've been paying 2% more of the tax mix into their.
Well, 738,000 is a pretty good chunk of money.
Yeah, that's not really what I.
Members Mike, I think we have additional information.
Groundkeeper position is out of 101112.
Okay, so it's not out of this?
It's a General Fund position.
Okay.
It's just managed by the Rec Department from a management perspective, but it's, it's paid out.
Okay, so that doesn't come out. Okay, that's good. And last question. Looks like we're going to have much more expensive repairs to the tennis courts than we originally thought. In talking to the gentleman from Total Tennis, it appears that we may have a underground water source underneath those tennis courts. And they showed me on the court where that water is. And they showed me on the court where that water is coming up. If we have to sink money in to save the courts, it would come out of the 270 fund, would it not?
Yeah. Or 273.
Okay. One or the other. Okay. So we would have money one way or the other to repair that. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Your turn.
Okay. Well, just out of curiosity, with this disaster we had with the Joneswood collapse, is, did that come out of the streets fund? Is that one of the reasons why we need that money moved over?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My other question is, University of States Boulevard is being just hammered by those giant trucks for the Woods Edge, and the streets look really, are going to consistently look terrible. So where does that come from? I know it's not going to be tomorrow, but I'm just saying, where, my neighbors are asking, you know, what's going to happen? How's that going to be handled? Do they have to pay for that because they damaged the streets with their trucks? Or is that our responsibility?
Well, it's the city's responsibility because you can't sit there and say, well, it's that truck, or it's that car, or it's that van, or it's that school bus. It's going to come out of the street fund with annual paving if we deem it as being such to have to be repaired, much like we would any other street in the city.
Okay. Interesting.
Thank you. Good questions. I'd like one clarification, and please correct me, anyone, if I am wrong about this. There was a question about these changes to the tax mix only being for this year. Once these changes are approved, if they are approved, they will go on for infinity until they are changed again. So it's not just for this year. They will, this will be the mix that will happen until they are changed again.
That's true.
So just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you.
It's not done year by year. This would be part of the municipal code and would go forward as is. Mayor, please correct me if I'm mistaken.
You are correct.
Thank you.
But as I had mentioned multiple times now, we do this almost every year to where we deem necessary to change the mix, that we will be bringing that forward with the new budget, which includes the tax mix for all of the funding streams, the general fund, transportation, streets, you know, you name it. So, Councilmember Crowell, President Crowell, you're correct, but it, that also means that you may see some other changes that are being requested by my administration associated with 2026 budget.
Absolutely.
Let me just add that in 12 years of being on council, I can't remember a year that we haven't done it at least once. Sometimes two, three times. Just depends upon the financial situation at the time. Mayor, uh, no, treasurer, whatever the hell you are.
No, I was just saying, just in my mind, just to put it in easy terms, you know, as a business owner that runs a business, these are the levers that the city needs to have available to make the adjustments when they need to make the adjustments, right? You can set your business up at the beginning of the year in January and say, this is what it's going to be, but it never flows that way. So when the revenues aren't exactly what you want, when the expenses get a little bit higher, this is the city's, this is how the administration needs to be able to adjust the levers to keep things where they need to be, right? You have one department that does really well, you can adjust the levers to make sure another department works really well. We have to take care of the whole city, not just one department at a time. And again, to have a rigid, to say, this is what it is at the beginning of the year and hopefully it works, that would never work. Never. It would never, never happen. So again, to the auditor's point, that's why you have to revisit it once a year, twice a year, whatever you have to do. So, all right, that makes it easier just knowing that that's, this is the adjustments that people have to make.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this topic before we move on to something else? Okay, let's move on to something else. Then and now certificates. I have to confess, I've always found these things confusing, you know? It seems like if it's then, it somehow becomes now, and it's all very abstract. I did?
Yeah.
What did I skip?
Yeah, we're on 2025 appropriations and transfer, 7625.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're quite right. Got my papers mixed up. Well, couldn't we just take care of then and now and then come back to, no, never mind. We're already going to do that with something else, aren't we?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem fair. He gets to do it, but I don't. Okay, where are we are? We have 2025 appropriation interfund transfers. And the proposed ordinance that I have here states, well, I think we've all read it, usually when we introduce an ordinance, we read the whole thing, but I guess we'll look at Section 1, the 2025 appropriation ordinance, 11524, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums, $500 to general fund parking enforcement and $300,000 to capital improvements fund 580 for transfer and increase in the total appropriations by set amount. So, the administration care to speak on this?
I would. I would like to amend what you have in front of you to remove the $300,000 from the general fund and just have it as the other item that is in there, which is the general fund parking enforcement 101.718.
Okay. Well, since this is committee and not a regular session, that's not exactly an amendment coming forward to an ordinance. It's really a suggestion to change the proposed ordinance that's coming forward. Is there any objection to the mayor's request to strike out part of the proposed ordinance and leave only the $500 to general fund? That's a procedure question. It's not really a thing for the audience to chip in on, so. No? No objections? Okay. So I'll take your pen here.
We just delete it.
When it comes up for first reading, then it's what it'll be amended. And this part that we're talking about now is all part of these adjustments that we're trying to figure out for all the projects that we have going on. And so instead of going ahead and doing this tonight and moving money out of our capital improvements fund, I think we're all going to look at the figures again and see if we still need this. And next week, we might be talking about it again. I don't know.
Well, then we can deal with the $500 to general fund parking enforcement if anyone wants to chime in on that from the administration or the audience or finance committee. Anything to say about, member Clotfelter?
I'm just curious about the wording that it says that $500 to general fund parking enforcement 101-718 is for a refund? Do we, do we know what that is about?
Yeah. So TC 600 is a refunds line.
Right. And if you're issuing refunds, it has to come out of TC 600. And so if there's not enough money in TC 600, you can't issue a refund. Like, I can't go and like, if, for whatever reason, I need to refund you money out of parking enforcement, I can't like give it to you out of supply, out of TC 600. It's just from an accounting perspective, I can't do that. And there's just not enough in that refunds line ultimately. It's not a lot that you're going to do, but you have to do it out of that fund, so, for that transaction class.
Okay. So if I put 10 quarters in a parking meter and I don't get the time that I'm supposed to get, and I want a refund, then you had to take it out of TC 600.
Correct.
I feel better knowing that.
Really?
Thanks for the information. Auditor.
Well, just to add that, several funds have refund lines. Parks and Rec does refunds regularly, utilities. And usually they start out around $500 in the beginning of the year. It's not a large amount that we put in there. Might end up being $1,000. But yes, as we stated, if they want to issue refunds, then this is, that's the account line it has to come out of. So they, parking enforcement needs more money in that account line.
Thank you. Any further discussion, this item? Okay. Third item, then and now certificates. Seems like we've been here before. Ordinance authorizing then and now certificates for the following, a payment to Howell Rescue Systems in the amount of $3,952.08 for a thermal imaging camera for the police department, and a payment to Matthews Insurance in the amount of $6,047 that will be issued by the auditor's office from the ACIC funds for armory insurance. So, other members? Member Wood?
Then and now we're paying back something that we've already spent, so cat's out of the bag. But what's the thermal imaging camera for?
I'd like to know that, too.
I think it's the...
Is it police? For the police department?
What do they, what do they use it for?
You can find people with a thermal imaging, like behind a, so like if I hide behind this door, you don't want to open the door and see me, you can look at the thermal imaging and see if there's a, there's a heat source there.
Thank you.
Member Clotfelter?
I'm curious, the $6,047 for insurance for the armory, will that be an annual expense going forward?
No, actually, that's the Athens Community Improvement Corporation. And we manage, that's kind of a separate entity, but it's an arm of the city. And I'm the treasurer of that board. And so we run that money through the city and track it. It's not part of our, we do get audited on it, but separately from our city funds and activities. And so we are actually the ones that make that payment, but that's coming out of money that is in their fund.
Okay.
And yeah, that was just a bill that we had to go ahead and pay, you know, while council was off. And as you know, the other thing about then and now, we need this suspended and passed tonight, as the rules are, we only have 30 days to deal with these, so I'd appreciate that.
For the audience, any comments? Any further discussion on this item? And we'll introduce it later. I believe that's all for Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, member Reisner. We move on now to the Planning and Development Committee chaired by member Swank.
All right. Just one item this evening, dealing with the Hocking River. I'm going to read what this is about, not the whole thing, just the first line. And if Director Stone would help me out here to explain what we're doing, because I'm afraid I'm going to botch it up. I've read emails from him, which have been very clear, I thought, but now I'm a little confused, so I'm going to defer to him. This is going to be an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance and ordinance 4724, authorizing the local share of the United States Army Corps of Engineers Hocking River Study. Director Stone, if you could help us out here, please?
Sure. Thank you, member Swank. So it's ultimately a three-year study. US Army Corps of Engineers doesn't do anything quickly. It's, and I say that as a proud member of US Army Corps of Engineers. This is roughly 800 and, 800, you know, close to $900,000 bill ultimately for this. The way that Section 1135 of the, they call it Section 1135 authority, it's, the federal entity pays the first $100,000, and then all the remainder is, is split 50/50. And so our total cost is $386,000. And I'll make sure I got that number right. That's the number you said, correct?
Yes.
Right. 386, yeah.
Yeah. And we're just asking you to authorize that increase for that. The number, the previous number was based on an estimate, and this is the actual, we got the, we got the bill, and it's really not a bill. It was, it was, it was the full amount that we're expected to pay, but we paid over three years. And so I don't need an appropriation because I've placed the money for 2024 and 2025 in the budget. In fact, I've already paid that, and we won't pay the balance of this until 2026, and I'll place it in the budget. So all we're doing is asking you to authorize this amount of money. The end goal of this is a project, and while this doesn't pay for the project, this pays for the study that gets us through all the environmental considerations and the preliminary design in order to produce a project, and we're hoping to get more federal funding, that will do several things. Number one, it will improve, improve the water quality in the Hocking River. So it's really an ecology project, and, you know, I think we had a presentation about this a while back, to look at previous core projects and make them better from an environmental perspective. And so, you know, you look at the Hocking River, it's straight, trapped oil channel, it moves a lot of water, but it's not really environmentally that great of a habitat for things to live in. And certainly, it's not particularly good for recreation. And so, so the outcome, hopefully, of this study is, number one, a design that will allow more federal money to come for us to do improvements that will improve the water quality and improve the environment of the river, as well as improve recreation. That is to say, you know, make it better for paddling, better for kayaking, canoeing. And then, and then the other thing ultimately is improve the safety of the falls at Whitesmill. That's a major reason I embarked in this from the get-go, is I was trying to find outside money to improve conditions there and make those falls more safe and less of a dump trap. So that's our end goal. All we're doing is asking you to authorize the full amount of the study, that we'll pay the rest of it in 2026.
Very good. Thank you, Director Stone. And as mentioned earlier, when this thing was all built back in 19, what, 68 to 1970, we treated the environment a little bit differently than we'd like to today. So bring it up to great. And since we've been talking about funds and stuff, it's the end of June, the stormwater fund had half a million dollars in it, so it's a healthy fund also. So if we have other projects, we'll be able to fund those appropriately. Members of the audience, comments? Members of the administration? Mayor Patterson?
Yeah, I just want to elaborate a little bit on what Director Stone had mentioned to you, all of you, and what your conversation you're having now. And that is that first and foremost, the Whitesmill Falls will not go away. I mean, that's a rock outcrop, and that's going to stay intact. When Director Stone was referencing making it safer, that we all recognize that the former dam that used to sit across that body of water failed back in the 1970s, and a lot of the remnants are still down below with the building material that went into building that dam. So that's what we're talking about. So just to put everyone at ease, that the beauty of the falls are not going to be disrupted, impeded, removed, that is not what's going to happen. What is happening is making it a safer passage for those to recreate and for the rest of us to sit on the shores and enjoy.
Thank you. Members of the Planning and Development Committee, questions, comments? Other members of council? That concludes, oh, sorry, sir.
I was just going to add on that the lowhead dams that the mayor's referencing are lethal, to say the least, they're quite dangerous. And so it's great to see the administration taking leadership on having that taken out.
Member Clotfelter?
I concur with member Wood. I really applaud you for trying to get federal funding to make that safer. It's just been tragic that people have died there, and hopefully that will never happen again once these, these changes are enacted.
Any other comments? That concludes Planning and Development for the evening.
Excellent. Thank you, member Swank. We'll move directly into our regular session.
If we go back to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that reminder. We need to go back to City and Safety Services, Chair member McCary.
Thank you. Just as a reminder to those tuning in, we are returning to the item of discussion regarding the remaining payment for our fire station headquarters construction and seeking some guidance from Director Stone.
Okay. Yeah. And again, I apologize for this. Again, it was typos that I failed to catch, and I have it correct now, and I have the right number. So, you know, ultimately, you made some adjustments, and I thank you for doing that in June. There have been a couple slight changes since then. Those changes are those modifications that you made in June, there were typos in that ordinance where we didn't capture 09323, which was the ordinance that put everything against the safety services levy. And so what we did is we had changed a prior ordinance that still had money from the, you know, significant amount from the general fund identified, and we didn't want to do that. And so we're now changing the correct ordinance, or we're making the language correct, so it's all referencing the 206 fund. But in the meantime, since June happened, and then we come to today, we did receive grant reimbursement from a FEMA grant we got for the exercise equipment that we purchased out of the, out of the bond proceeds, but we applied for a FEMA grant that went into the fire station. And so if you look on the first page, that $400,770, that accounts for that grant reimbursement that we remitted to the 206 fund, to the, to the safety services capital fund. that we remitted to the 206 Fund, to the, to the Safety Services, um, Capital Fund. Um, so, we're, we're gonna go ahead and use that money, um, rather than take more money from the cap fund. And so, it, you'll see a corresponding adjustment down below in Section 2 and Section 3, where it reduces, um, the money that we were taking out of the cap fund, um, to basically make up the shortfall. And so, you know, we, we think it needs to come out of this, this, this grant reimbursement, and the, and the Safety Services, uh, capital levy, because that's what it, it went to, and that protects the cap fund by, by that, that amount. Where the errors are on the ordinance that's in front of you is on Page 2, uh, and there's just a couple of them. And again, this kind of goes back to, to, um, you know, the, having the... There's seven different, uh, ordinances for this particular, um, project over, over a four-year period, and I've got the typos correct now. So, if you look at the, um, um, the, the first paragraph where it says 13 million, uh, they're in red, it says $13,572,000, that really is supposed to be $14,572,000. So, if you would just adjust, um, that number to 14 million. The next paragraph, it says $3,640,000. That's only $640,000, not $3,640,000. And then, the final, um, paragraph, or the third paragraph where it says $9 million, that should be $13,932,000, $13,932,000. And so, when you look at total authorizations, um, that $13,932,000 from the, from the 206 Fund, and then the $640,000 way back in the beginning from the General Fund, those two together equal that $14,572,000 authorized in that first, first paragraph, and that's what it's supposed to be. And I, I, again, apologize for not having caught this prior to the, prior to the meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll ask committee members if they have any questions in response to the update. Members Swank.
So, at the end of the day, the cost of the fire station, the extra parking, which we badly needed, and the sports court is 14,000, 14,000, I wish, 14,572,000.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And all the design, and all...
Yeah, yeah, every, yeah, everything to get it complete, yeah.
All the wax, all the furniture, all the, everything.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from committee members? Any additional information or comment from administration? Members of the public? Other members of council?
So, just a procedural question, since we have to make a whole bunch of changes. Is this gonna be, then we have to say this is our first reading and, or, and it has to go back to the first reading? How, how's that working? I just want to make sure we're doing this right.
It's my thought that this would be first reading, and I would, uh, read these changes this evening, but is anyone under a different impression?
Is that right?
Okay.
Okay, just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Thanks. And will I just need to indicate that...
We're gonna suspend the rules, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Any suspension?
I, the restroom requested, but did this one need the suspension?
Doesn't say.
Okay, I don't see a need for suspension for the fire station payment unless it's...
I mean, I like it, it's just first reading tonight.
Yes, first reading tonight.
You know, I mean, I, I need to, I need, I need to pay.
Yeah, we need to finish this, thank you. All right, then we will say that our City Safety Services Committee meeting is adjourned for the evening.
Excellent, thanks for your patience through that complicated committee meeting. Uh, we will now move on to our regular session of council. Um, our first order of business is to establish quorum. All council members are present, and we have quorum. Uh, the next, uh, item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of City Council held June 16th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, second.
Move a motion in a second. Are there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The minutes have been approved. We also have the disposition of minutes from the special session of City Council held June 17th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, second.
Move a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The minutes have been approved. We now have communications. Do any council members have communications they'd like to share? Yes, Member Wood?
I had the privilege this morning to go into a cheer-in, um, for the Ohio Academics Union, um, along with the, the mayor, uh, and Commissioner Atkins, um, to support that effort, uh, for the bargaining, um, for the faculty. It's great to see there are about 50 to 75 folks that turned up, um, great to see that, and, uh, hope to see that effort come to a positive resolution soon. So, thanks to the, uh, to the mayor, the, the leadership of that union for coming, for, for putting that together.
Any other communications? Yes, Member McCary.
Thank you, President Crowe. I will share that the Athens Community Relations Commission has vacancies, so if you are someone who is interested in being a member of a group that's devoted to improving our community, uh, relationships with one another, then please feel free to reach out to me, mccary@ci athens.oh.us.
Um, and I would like to share that I have one communication. Uh, we have, had already, um, not objected to a liquor transfer from the, uh, former Soul Restaurant to Newsome Enterprises Incorporated, currently doing business as Gem Sports Bar. Um, they have also requested a, uh, an extending sales, an extension of their permit to extend their sales from 1:00 AM until 2:30 AM. So, uh, this is some opening list for discussion, Members Swank.
Uh, as most of you know, the Far East Side Neighbor Association publishes a newsletter, uh, four times a year, and our most recent newsletter went out last week. Uh, in that, they always asked me to write a piece about the past or upcoming council business, and in that newsletter, I alluded to this, as well as some other things. Uh, since then, I've heard from several people. Uh, one man quoted his father and said, um, "Nothing ever good happens after midnight", and he would like, uh, us to, uh, have a hearing on this.
Okay, so Member Swank has requested a hearing. Director Lysen, do we vote on that, or is that just one? He's making a motion, and then if we, and then if it passes, then we have, okay.
Yeah, I would move that, uh, for citizen input, that we have a, uh, hearing on this, uh, liquor extension request.
Second.
We have a, uh, motion in a second to, uh, request a hearing on this extended hours request. Um, any discussions on this motion? All those in favor of requesting a hearing on this issue signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and, uh, we would like to request a, uh, a hearing on this, uh, request to extend hours, uh, at 700 East State Street from 1:00 AM until 2:30 AM.
President Crowe?
Yes, Member Swank.
In order, uh, not having seen one of these before, how does this play out?
Well, I have to, um, actually, complete the paperwork, and I have to actually have an affidavit that says that there's good cause for the city to make that, uh, request for a hearing.
Okay.
So, I'll take care of it.
And where does the hearing take place and all that sort of thing?
Well, could take place in Columbus, but not likely. I think the last time we did it, they came here, and we had the hearing here.
And the people who could participate in that? Members of council?
Public hearing, right?
Public, okay, okay.
Mayor, did you have a...
I've not been through one of these before.
And it was here in council chambers.
Okay.
Um, and just so council has some idea as to how this works, um, one, and I understand the concern. There's an expense associated with this, um, and on typically the other party's side, because of having to hire a lawyer whose area is liquor licenses, liquor control. We did have one here in council chambers, this going back, I was a mayor at the time, uh, but I sat in on it, and it was, uh, contesting a liquor license somewhere in the uptown area. Uh, and it was rather interesting, the, the outcome of that, because it's running through the Department of Commerce and through liquor control. So, um, it didn't work in our favor or in council's favor. It was council that initiated the request for hearing. Unless there's real strong probable cause to deny something, these are not easy cases. And, as I learned during that particular case, as it rolled forward, it was Fort Chipotle, and looking for a liquor permit, uh, which they were ultimately granted. Uh, the city of Athens was denied being able to object to liquor sales, uh, what was it, D5 or something like that for Chipotle? I don't remember what it was, but, just FYI.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and my last communication is to, uh, make sure that the public knows that nominations are being accepted for the 11th Annual Athena Award. Um, and, and I don't know if the mayor was going to talk about this, too, but, um, uh, the award recognizing, recognizes outstanding contributions and service towards people with disabilities in the greater Athens community. And the award, the award nominations will be accepted through Tuesday, September 2nd. So, please submit nominations for the Athena Award. Yes, Members Swank?
So that we don't duplicate prior efforts. Is there a, a list of past recipients, so that we don't nominate someone who's already?
There is, though, I saw, I think online, or maybe it's on the city's website, there is a list I saw somewhere.
There is a list, uh, and that list was included in the nomination package. It just kind of indicated who the individuals in the past, who they've done. Larry Jagman, uh, is one that comes to mind right away. JW Smith is another recipient. I believe Patty Mitchell is a recipient. There, there's a, there's some real notables, all of them are notable.
Yeah, okay, great.
So, that list is available.
Thanks.
Okay, now we have reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director? Treasurer, Mayor?
I do have a few items to share. First and foremost, I think that council received an invite, uh, for an event that's happening on September 30th. Um, I would like to also mention, um, that the Armory, um, will have an open house, uh, at approximately 1:00 PM or 1300 hours. It is so close to being completed. You may have seen the front page of the, um, Athens New, or the Messenger, rather. Um, it, it's, it's really quite remarkable, um, in such a long journey. But, uh, just mark your calendars, um, that's for public to come out and be able to do an open house walk-through of the Armory.
That's on September 30th.
Sep, what did I say? Okay, September 30th. At 1:00, 1:00 PM, 1300, for those of us who are international or military. Couple other items I want to share. Um, I have a proclamation right here, it goes into effect tomorrow. I noticed on my drive home from work today, that in Southside Park, there was an ice cream social, I, um, ice cream with the, I don't like using the word cops, with the police. Um, it was a nice event, and I think it's related to this. It's, uh, tomorrow evening is the National Night Out, to where we recognize all the great work that our law enforcement agencies do. This has been something that's been going on for years, and it always occurs on the first, uh, Tuesday in August. So, tomorrow night is National Night Out. Um, I should also mention, this is worth mentioning to council, if you haven't seen already, um, the police department has a new addition, which is our first police cruiser that is non-carbon emitting. Um, catching a little flack over that, but I really don't care, um, because we continue to decarbonize the city of Athens, which we've been doing for a long time. I think it might be time, Councilmember McCary or Council President Crowe, to re-look or rethink our mission to cut our carbon emissions by 50% by 2030. I think that we have far exceeded that. I need to get the numbers on that, but we have done a great job with the solar and also our EV fleet. Uh, but we do have a, um, an electric police cruiser. Someone out there said, "Great, you know, what happens when this thing loses all of its power in chasing a vehicle somewhere?" We're 11 square miles of city. That's gonna be a long chase if someone, if that cruiser loses energy while chasing someone within the city proper. If they leave the city proper, we'll hand it off to the Sheriff's Department or to, to State Highway Patrol. Um, I want to welcome a new commissioner to the Planning Commission, and that is Ali Rapley. That is one of those positions where council, um, does not approve my appointments. This is a, a direct appointment, so we have someone from the real estate sector who will be sitting and replacing, uh, Austin Phillips, who is gonna be sad to see the Phillips family move, but they are relocating. And so, um, I'm really happy that we have, um, Ali Rapley joining the Planning Commission as one of the commissioners. Um, a couple weeks back, when council was on recess, we had 85 elected officials from across the United States come into Athens. It was the National League of Cities Summer Boards and Leadership Meeting, which was in Columbus. But NLC was able to work into the three-day schedule of events to where for the Board of Directors and other leaders of boards and commissions for the National League of Cities, did come down here, got to, uh, spend some time meeting President Laurie Stewart Gonzalez, then came uptown and walked down Court Street to the Southeast Ohio History Center and learned more about the city, as well as listening to one of the blind boys of Alabama, Dr. JW Smith, who sang, and Otis Cochrane played keyboards, which was truly amazing, and then got to go through a sneak peek of the Armory. I will share with council, these elected officials, like I'd mentioned, were from across the United States, and they were truly, truly impressed with how beautiful, their words, not mine, although I agree, um, how beautiful and how attractive the city of Athens was. And the interesting thing, mostly coming from my colleagues in southwestern United States, how green it is down here. I concur. Because I have been, I used to live in Tucson, Arizona way back when, so I, I know what it looks like. A couple of items to share with you, um, and that is that tomorrow morning, I will be in Washington DC taking part on a panel for the Housing Supply Accelerator, which is through the American Planning Association and the National League of Cities. And during that meeting, I'll also be engaging with, uh, some of the staffers for the Senate Minority, um, on the Banking Committee, because there is a bill that is being, working its way through, um, through the Hill in DC, and it's for, um, housing. Um, so I'm excited to see what that's truly gonna look like, but certainly gonna advocate for programs that allow for more housing in cities, towns, and villages across the United States, in particular, the city of Athens. So, uh, it's an honor to be on this panel, speaking to that, but also having the opportunity to engage with the, uh, minority leadership on the Banking Committee, at least with their staff, looking at, and they are housing policy staffers. So, that's interesting. The last thing I want to share, and I believe, uh, Scott and Ryan, um, whomever could tee this up, but I want to show you some visitors that are permanent visitors, that are dancing across the Sells Park Pond, compliments of David Griesmeyer, who has become of late quite the notable metal artist. Uh, those ballerinas that you see in this image, um, are literally, their toe is dancing across the water. Um, for those of you who've seen it, you know what I'm talking about. For those of you haven't, you're getting a bird's eye view now, um, of these three ballerinas. David Griesmeyer, it's worth mentioning, is now being tapped internationally. He just finished a collaborative project in Havana Cuba. Um, a very large installation piece, and a piece that he's also now being tapped by France and Serbia to do some large installation art, so he's really kind of taking off as an artist. So, I'm really pleased that we were able to get him before he became too expensive for us to work with, with something that just makes people a little bit happier, um, because that's what arts are all about in the city of Athens, something that surprises you, but also something that just makes you good, especially in these trying times. Uh, and that's all I have.
Mayor, does he have a piece in our sculpture walk behind the fire station?
He does. He has the fairy that is sitting on the toadstool.
Yes.
Uh, and he is also one that we're working with for the 56682 Roundabout, uh, and hopefully having an installation piece there that reflects on the great work that Passion Works has done as our city flower.
Thank you. Okay, we now are moving on to ordinances for first reading. We have no third or second reading ordinances tonight, although I do believe we have a number of ordinances that will need to be suspended. First ordinance to be con... First ordinance to be considered, 73-25 is an ordinance amending ordinance 63-25 that authorized construction of the new fire headquarters, project number 346, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. As mentioned and discussed in our committee meeting earlier this evening, we have some amendments to introduce for first reading of ordinance 73-25. And the ordinance begins with section one. Sections 1, 2, 3, and 4 of ordinances 63-25 are hereby amended to read as follows. Section 1, the 2025 appropriation ordinance, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $40770 and $1900 to Safety Services Fund 206. And section 2 reads that the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 is further amended by decreasing General Fund Fire 101.208 supplies and services by $27,000 and increasing General Fund Fire 101.208 for transfer by the same amount, decreasing General Fund 101.120 other administrative supplies and services by $12,000, by $25,000, and increasing General Fund 101.120 other administrative services for transfer by the same amount, decreasing capital improvements fund 580 by $500,000, and increasing capital improvements fund 580 for transfer by the same amount, and increasing and decreasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Section 3, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfers: From Fund 101.208 to Safety Services Fund 206, $27,000; From General Fund 101.120 to Safety Services Fund, in the same amount, $25,000; And Capital Improvements Fund 580 to the Safety Services Fund, in the amount of $479,229.81. Section 4, section 3 of ordinance 145-23 authorized expenditure is hereby amended to read as follows, and this is where the changes really come in, that were discussed during this evening's City and Safety Services Committee meeting, and that is section 3, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to, and now this number is $14,572,000.
Fourteen million?
Fourteen million. Apologies, yes. $572,000. Six, making sure I did this right. Yes, $640,000 from General Fund Fire 101.208, that includes $40,000 authorized by ordinance 18-22 for planning preliminary engineering, and $600,000 authorized by ordinance 84-22 for design and construction management services. And then the big change that we have in the next section, or the next paragraph, is that $13,932,000 from Safety Services Fund Fire 206.208, that includes $600,000 for land purchase and site preparation authorized by ordinance 121-22. Finally, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. This has now been read for the first time? All right. Do we need to invite some questions or comments?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes.
Is this the one we want to suspend to pay it?
I understand it's not necessary. We need to get it paid soon, but do we need to suspend this evening? Director Stone?
It sounds great if you would, just because I could put it behind me, but in the, in the spirit of not suspending too frequently, it's okay if we delay. I would make one minor, minor, one more minor modification, and it's very minor, but it'll avoid having some, some hanging money that just hangs out there. So on the first page, the very last portion that it says, "for transfer by same amount." I don't need to transfer that full amount. I only need to transfer $479,229. That's the amount in that next thing. What ultimately would end up happening if we did it this way is, is that $21,000 would be kind of orphaned in that TC 600 line. We wouldn't actually conduct the transfer, and then at the end of the year, we'd just get drawn back in unappropriated funds. So it's not that big a deal if that causes, causes a problem, but you can leave it as written. But that, that is one other thing that I should have told you beforehand, so.
Thank you. Member Swank?
Yes. Well, he read it. I think we're back to Sam.
Yes.
Mr. President, even though it's not necessary to do, and I, for one, am not a big fan of suspending the rules all that often, I think in a spirit of wrapping this thing up, it would be good measure to close the door on this. Therefore, I would move that we suspend the rules on 73-25, and that Director Stone will get on to other things to help the city.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance 73-25. Any comments or questions about suspending the rules? Members, be honest.
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, considering how we're still seeming to be tweaking it. So I would like to see, I might be happy to next week, or whatever, but I'm not totally comfortable with doing it with all these little tweaky things that I haven't actually seen the final version of. And if it's not a rush, I just soon wait and make sure that everything's right. But that's my thought.
Any other comments or questions on suspension of the rules, Member McCary?
President Crowell, could you confirm then when second reading would occur?
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today. Okay. And at that point, to Member Spillness's point, the rules could be suspended at that time?
Okay.
Do you still suspect you're the rules?
Yes.
I don't have a question on that.
Okay. So right now, under consideration is a motion to suspend the rules for 73-25. Any further comments or questions on the suspension? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, Director, would you like a hand vote on that? Did you catch?
I couldn't tell who the second nay was.
Okay, I believe there were two nays. Member McCary and Member Spillness? Oh, three, and Member Wood as well? So we do not have the necessary number to suspend the rules this evening. Okay, then motion was denied. So this has been read for the first time. Are there any questions, additional comments from the city administration on this ordinance, or members of the public? Okay, we will move on to ordinance 74-25. An ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24, and amending ordinance 15-22 to increase the authorized expenditure for a new restroom facility at the West State Park, project number 349, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This topic was discussed during this meeting, this evening's earlier meeting of the City and Safety Services Committee, and this ordinance reads that the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $325,000 to Arts Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund 273, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 2 reads that, section 3 of ordinance 15-22 is hereby amended to read as follows: The Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $325,000 from Arts Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund 273 for said project number 349. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, and no suspension necessary for 74-25.
That's right. I can recap from committee meeting that we had a request to suspend the rules on this, but there was some information that we're seeking, including some details about what kind of cleaning frequency this facility will have, and there would be an opportunity to suspend the rules at another date.
Thank you, Member McCary. Any comments or questions on 74-25? Members of the administration, members of the public? Moving on, ordinance 75-25 is an ordinance amending ordinance 23-24, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask the administration, does this need suspended?
This is the document.
You have, just when the agenda goes away. There it is.
This is the tax mix change.
Right.
I don't know if the auditor is the appropriate person to chime in on suspension.
I would probably like it suspended this month, so in two weeks, if you wouldn't mind. That way we can start adjusting our records.
But we don't need a motion tonight.
No.
How about 76-25? Do we need to suspend that one?
Let's, let's finish this one up, and then we'll get to the next one.
Just wanted to know where we're headed.
Any other comments from city administration, members of the public, on 75-25?
I haven't read it yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
First reading, an ordinance amending ordinance 23-24 reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency be ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, section 1, effective August 1, 2025. Section 1 of the ordinance 23-24 is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 1, that revenues from the city income tax after deductions of 5.13% for the Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, and 5.13% for the Arts Parks Recreation Debt Fund 450, and 2.56% for the payment of expenses associated with the Recreation/Community Facility Fund 271, and 5.13% for the Fire Station Debt Fund 430, as required under tax levies, shall be allocated directly to funds as follows. The amendment is on line B, 4.15%, yeah, 14.5% is struck, and is replaced with 15.5% to Street Fund 220. Line C, 8% is struck, and replaced with 7% to Recreation Fund 270. Section 2, the ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Athens in order to maintain fiscal integrity, and shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any comments or questions from council members on this ordinance? City administration, members of the public? Seeing none, now we will move on to 76-25. An ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Section 1 reads as follows: The 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $500 to General Fund Parking Enforcement 101.71A, transaction code 600, for a refund. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
So I should note that the title of this ordinance will also be amended. There will not be an inter-fund transfer as part of this. Is that correct, auditor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good point.
Any questions or comments from city council on this ordinance? City administration, members of the public? Thank you, Member Reisner. Moving on, 77-25 is an ordinance approving then and now certificates for payment and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, section 1. An ordinance authorizing then and now certificates for the following: A payment to Howe Rescue Systems in the amount of $3,952.8 for a thermal imaging camera for the Police Department, and a payment to Matthews Insurance in the amount of $6,047 that will be issued by the Auditor's Office from ACIC funds for Armory Insurance. Section 2, the ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, in order to maintain fiscal integrity, and it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Any suspension on this one?
Yes.
You should have told me that ahead of time, when I, when I asked.
So you pay the bills, right?
Yeah.
Is there a suspension? Is there a motion for a suspension on 77-25?
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules for 77-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules 77-25, the reason being that these are bills that are passed due and need to be paid. Any comments or questions on the suspension motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The rules are suspended, Member Reisner.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 77-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 77-25. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? Members of the administration, members of the public? All those in favor of adopting 77-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion is approved, and the ordinance is adopted.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is it possible to go back to 76-25, where we were appropriating the $500 for the Police Department refunds?
Law Director, can we go backwards?
We just amended on second reading.
Is there?
We amended on second.
Well, I think this, they need this money now for a refund. They have a really large refund, I believe.
I tried to find out.
I know, I'm sorry. I was asleep for a minute, I guess, but, yeah.
So are you going to go back?
So it just went through first reading?
And suspend the rules, can I?
Yeah.
Yes?
Correct. That would be, that would be what is being requested.
Yeah, I wanted to suspend the rule.
Well, we had a first reading.
Yeah.
And procedurally, this has to wait until, for two weeks, in two weeks, because we already had a first reading on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Law Director. Moving on to ordinance 78-25.
Now, one thing, we could have a special session after the committee meeting next week, and you can explain this during the committee meeting, and then it could be actually, suspend the rules then, and just have this one, because there's another matter that probably will need action next week. After we were talking about the liquor permit, I actually looked at the process, and it has to be a resolution, and it has to be supported by facts as to why the city's going to be, to object. So during committee meeting, I hope there's still time, during committee next week, you'll have to have some discussion to provide some facts as to why you want to object. When we did this before with Chipotle, there were actually police reports and that sort of thing of crime in the neighborhood. So you and I, Alan and I, could talk about that, but that would be another matter that'll have to come up then.
Sounds good. Thank you, Law Director. 78-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance and ordinance 47-24, authorizing the local share of the United States Army Corps of Engineers Hocking River Study, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Section 2 of ordinance 47-24 is hereby amended to read as follows: The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $386,753 from the store of water fund at 755.635 TC 500 for said local share. One quick question. Director Stone, as part of this whole project, is it possible that they may discover ways in which to mitigate the flooding on the West State Street ballfields and the proposed restroom facility?
No.
Okay.
This is downstream.
All right, darn. No, I know it's downstream, but yes, so we're back, okay. All right. Questions, or no, you, back to you.
Thank you, Members Swank. Comments or questions on ordinance 78-25? Members of the administration, members of the public? Now move on to ordinance 79-25. An ordinance amending ordinance 34-25, authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for construction of the state route 682-56 intersection in for construction of the State Route 682-56 intersection improvements project number 357, introduced by Councilmember Spianis.
Thank you, President Crowell. I did pretty much read it earlier this evening. We've gone over this before in the past, and so I'm wondering, do I need to read this whole thing again, or can we?
It's up to you. You're in charge. You may do whatever. Nothing has to be read. You can just explain it. You can do whatever you like.
I could do a whole speech right now, but I thought, since I really kind of read it and we've gone through over this many times, unless someone objects, I would just as soon say, you know, we need to suspend the rules, so I'd like to move that we suspend the rules on 79-25.
What are the reasons for suspension?
Oh, as I mentioned earlier, and I'll quote here. I asked, what's the rush? And the answer was, we are approaching 60 days post-bid opening for contract signing. So there is, if we don't do this, then they could just cancel the whole thing and move on without us.
Thank you.
So it's either now or never.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance 79-25. Any comments or questions on the motion to suspend? Members of the administration, public, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The rules have been suspended, Members Spianis.
Okay, well, that being the case, I would like to move that we vote on and pass ordinance 79-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 79-25. Any comments or questions from council members on this ordinance? City administration? Members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 79-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. We now move on to announcements and other business. May I have a motion to accept the May and June 2025 financial reports?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on these reports? City administration, members of the public, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion is, carries, and the May and June 25 financial reports are accepted. A motion to accept the April, May, and June 2025 credit card transactions.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept these credit card transactions. Any comments or questions on this acceptance? Members of the administration, members of the public, all those in favor of accepting these credit card transactions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, and those credit card transactions are accepted. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. If anyone here tonight would like to come forward, please state your name and your address, and you may have three minutes.
All right, thank you. I'm a city council last month. I am Michael Bart. I live on Morris Avenue, and I guess that means we're starting.
Sorry. Go for it.
Okay. I came to speak today in opposition of Benny the Brick. It's a new AI-powered chatbot on the city's website. I had a few conversations with other citizens, and no one seems to want this. It just seems like another example of money leaving Athens. It seems like another subscription service, just like we have the trashcans and the parking meters, where we pay by the use, and the more we use it, the more expensive it's going to get. And I got to talk about a concept called in-shitification that was coined by Cory Doctorow, where first you have a high-quality offering from a company to attract users, then you degrade the offering to better serve advertisers and business customers, and finally, just to maximize profits for the shareholders, and it serves no one. Phrase is the company that makes this product. It's owned by CopySmith AI. According to my research, six years ago, they were a company that did AI research assistant services, and then they got a lot of their funding from executives at Big Data and advertising companies, and in the last six years, they've pivoted to municipal customers. I wonder, like, what's the benefit of using this tool for taxpayer-funded space? And this company, like all companies, have a legal obligation to make as much money for their shareholders, so what's to stop them from selling all of this data they've collected on us or getting stolen? And then that data bundled with a bunch of others' data can be really valuable to sway elections, and all kinds of other things can happen. What else do we got? And also, the product doesn't even work. We're paying for it, and it doesn't do anything that a search engine can't do. And earlier in this meeting, I heard the mayor talk about decarbonizing the city. I think we got to look at what is the carbon cost of using AI. Originally, there was a version of the big, beautiful bill that tried to forbid any restrictions on AI for the next 10 years, but it got removed, so the city does have the power to put restrictions on AI. And I am, like Member Swank said, can we do better, cheaper, and local? There's a whole bunch of reasons. I bet in two weeks, there could be even more people coming here to speak against Benny the Brick. I just think we got to stop Benny the Brick before it gets out of hand, and thanks.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate your comments. Is anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Mary Abel, 48, Strathmore. And I have a question, probably the mayor will have to address this. We had a discussion when we were talking about short-term rentals, and the code office was going to track those for the city. Do you know if that's still being done?
I believe that it is. Ms. Abel, let me double-check with them and see where we're at with the code office tracking. Yeah. Director Stone was saying, yes, it is, but we don't have an exact number, but I...
We do have an exact number, sir, just not tonight. I don't have an exact number with me right now. I can check Benny the Brick quickly and find out, but, no.
Well, just because we've had a discussion regarding housing and different things, and I had asked that question, and no one seemed to know whether or not we were still doing that. So thank you for checking on that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public tonight? We will now be, I would like a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Mr. President, I've moved that we move into executive session, all members of council and all required elected officials to consider pending litigation two items.
Two matters.
Two matters, okay. I'm reading what Debbie wrote here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. We will do a roll call. Yes, Mayor?
Could you elaborate on which elected officials you would like to be in here?
Required elected officials.
Go ahead and name them.
There's no required, like, council.
Right, just name who you were requesting.
We just have to name anyone.
Well, who wants to come? I guess I'd have to refer to the law director, which...
No, I would just name, actually, the auditor, and if you want, the treasurer, the mayor.
And the law, or the Service Safety Director is not elected official.
Okay, Director Stone, Mayor Patterson, Auditor Heck, and the Treasurer, Thomas.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session with the stated individuals. This will be a roll call vote. Member Spianis.
Aye.
Member Reisner.
Aye.
Member Wood.
Aye.
Member Swank.
Aye.
Member McCary.
Aye.
Member Claude Felter.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
It's a unanimous to enter into executive session. The public should know that we will be closing the door. We will open the door and allow anyone back in when the executive session is over.
I will exit executive session. We convene the regular meeting, and then you'll have a motion to adjourn.
Yes, that. Okay, thank you very much.